Can we have the Legacy Youth Academy? Come on up.
Let's close our eyes and bow our heads. Thank you, Lord, for today. Thank you for everybody that's here. I say you just bless this meeting and just continue to bless Los Banas.
I pray that everyone who is in depression or anyone who is sick, I pray that they may be healed, healed in the Lord Jesus.
Dear God, I pray that you help us to help this city and help our nation and our state. In Jesus' name, amen.
Commander Reiner, you lead us in the pledge. All right, call the meeting to order at 6:01. I got roll call, please.
Begonia, Jones, Lewis, Giannis.
Here, we have a quorum. Item four, consideration of approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion, Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
Oh, item 10. Okay, I'm sorry. Staff is requesting item 10 be removed from the agenda. Let me see what that is. Okay, the public notice advisement. That writes D.C. Okay. All right, let me try that again. A motion to approve the agenda with item 10 removed. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Item five, presentation certificate of recognitions. Let's go mobile on this. All right, do I have anybody here from Golden Valley Health Center? Yes? All right. So we want to reissue a certificate of recognition to Golden Valley Health Center's street medicine team for their 1018 city council meeting in recognition of dedicated healthcare. In recognition of dedicated healthcare that was provided to the unhoused people of the community, the city of Los Banas, and wants to award you this certificate of recognition. So thank you. So do I. She ran from Eugene, sorry. Here, we'll move over. All right, thank you. All right, Renee Davenport. Come on up. All right, Renee. So a little bit about Renee. She, I know, I get to talk about you real quick. So Renee has dedicated her life to assist those in need. Her work is inspired by her daughter, who encouraged her outreach and service to those experiencing homelessness. Renee assists clients and case managers to connect available rental units for permanent housing. She's always willing to help and works tirelessly to change people's lives. And we're happy to say that we recently had a homeless veteran in need, and Renee was able to help that person with permanent housing. So we're very proud of the work you do, Renee. So because of that, in recognition of the dedicated property management work and services that she provides to the unhoused people in our community as they are placed in permanent housing, we give this certificate of recognition presented to Renee Davenport. You also will throw it up.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, move into item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted in the city council chamber information table in the back. This time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward and speak and just remind you to either silence or turn off your cell phones.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard. If I trusted my city or the officials or I had any kind of contact, I wouldn't have to be checking into your consent agenda and your agenda. But since that hasn't happened, I do have questions on item number, I think it's D. Why don't we buy our copiers outright? It would be a lump sum that would be paid out and it wouldn't be sent over a lease agreement to buy. Since we don't actually buy the copiers, they're just returned to the company as old. And then we start all over again. We start the cycle all over again. You can buy them outright. It would save $26,000. And you can purchase a service contract that's done yearly and it's based on the amount of copies that you make. It does include toner, but it doesn't include paper. I don't see a credit for the old equipment that we are exchanging. Was it a percentage off? I called Conica, and the copiers that you have chosen run anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000. I don't see a credit for returning the 11 machines that we do have. We can make better use of that. And we're used to paying lump sums for a lot of things that we do. We have a huge checkbook, which by the way reminds me, congratulations on being under 1.5 million for a check register. The other thing I would like to, an update on, you can do it in your closing speech, the $5 million grant for the new fire station. I don't know how that's going. And it is coming up for the end, where we would lose that 5 million. I also don't know how it is for our last-minute request for $15 million for the homeless. If we got it, we're told too late, so sorry. Or if we have other plans in regards to the homeless. I would like to invite the public to come to these meetings, to voice their concerns, their things that are going on in regards to the city, and voice how they feel about it. I don't want to be the only one up here and have people call me and say, Kathy, what about this? What about that? They need to be the ones to come up here. To solve that problem, if we changed our meetings back to seven o'clock, some of our commuters would be able to make it to these meetings and not have to send in letters that aren't read. That's all that I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lanas and City Council. Chris Sanz Santos here again, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. Recently had the opportunity to be one of the award presenters for the Merced County Hispanic Chamber installation dinner and awards ceremony at the UC Merced Ballroom, where every year they recognize men, women, and businesses that make an incredible impact in Merced County and a positive impact in their community. And actually, the 2023 Business of the Year was from right here in the city of Los Banas. Domingo Sandoval attended, representing Sandoval Wood Creations. He's an amazing guy with a really big, amazing heart, gave a very moving speech that touched all of us in the audience about how much he cared about the children of Los Banas. And the congressman actually had the opportunity to hear his story as well and why he cares so much about his work and using his business for such a positive impact. And we just wanted to congratulate him this evening as well. As I stated at the last city council meeting, Congressman Duarte was proud to vote for a bipartisan continuing resolution to prevent a government shutdown and keep the government open for the American people. Regardless of the recent events that have taken place in the House since that vote, he will continue his efforts to get the House back to work, to do the job the American people elected them to do, from passing fiscally responsible appropriations bills to standing by our friends when they need us the most. In this time of peril in the Middle East, Congressman Duarte would like to unequivocally affirm his support for Israel, one of our closest allies. Congressman Duarte strongly condemns a campaign of terror being waged by Hamas against the state of Israel. And the congressman is proud to stand with the Israeli people as he defends themselves from these cowardly, hateful, horrific acts of evil. At last count, at least 30 Americans have been killed and 1,400 Israelis murdered, and hundreds of Israeli civilians have been taken captive, along with an unknown number of American hostages. This is not a clash. This is not a mere attack. This is a war. And as we speak tonight, thousands of American sailors and marines in the USS Gerald R. Ford and USS Dwight D. Eisenhower carrier strike groups are taking up deterrent positions in the eastern Mediterranean. I hope I can speak for everyone in this chamber when I say that we are praying for the safety of our troops, we are praying for the safety of civilians, and we are praying for the safe return of every single hostage. Thank you for your time.
People are not here today because of newspaper articles. People are here today because they have questions. Questions that should have simple answers. Questions that continue to be ignored even after submitting an official public records request. At the end of the last city council meeting, Councilmember Lewis raised concerns over the amount of money the city is paying to the interim finance director. But the amount of money is only one red flag of many. According to the official contract for BWK Consulting, the cost to the city for the interim finance director should be approximately $15,000 per month. In the check register, that's part of the consent agenda tonight, check number 241245 is for $26,751.90, or about 78% more than the contract estimate. Red flag number two, the official contract is to BWK Consulting. But checks appear to be written to the finance director in his personal name instead of BWK Consulting. Red flag number three, I have here the staff report and the proposal from BWK Consulting that was included in the agenda packet for the meeting where this contract was approved. According to the staff report, the city solicited BWK for their services. This proposal did not come from a response to a public bid or from a recruitment service. I made an official public records request asking for a copy of BWK Consulting's official contract, as well as a copy of their registration with the state, something businesses applying for a business license in Los Banas are required to provide. But the second part of my request was ignored, and no explanation was given for why it was ignored. I will presume that it's because the city does not have a copy of their registration because no due diligence was performed on BWK Consulting. Red flag number four. At the end of that proposal, there is a personal email being used by the representative of BWK Consulting. Most financial professionals would never use their personal email to conduct business, only their professional email. Not only because of the potential appearance of hiding information, but because regulations for most sectors of the finance industry require that you archive your emails. Red flag number five. The California Secretary of State website shows that BWK Consulting does not have a current registration. Its current status is suspended, and thus the company is unable to legally conduct business. That status took effect back in 2010. Because of the five-minute time limit, I will stop with just those five red flags and end with a question. Is the company the city has contracted with to manage the city's finances, including the allocation of ARPA funds and the Small Business Assistance Program, legally able to conduct business? This question needs to be asked because the Secretary of State website clearly states that the answer is no, and that the contract to BWK is fraudulent. Before you approve that check register tonight, you should be confident you're not approving fraudulent checks.
Anyone else?
I'm not from Los Banas, and I don't have any red flags. I just want to compliment the city for the things that they have done and for Chrissy and her staff for the homeless. And those are forgotten people and especially the veterans who get a VASH voucher. So no red flag, just a compliment on everything that you have done. And I'm from Merced, and I can tell you that you're way above the bar as far as the homeless and what you're doing for the homeless population, which is the forgotten people. So thank you. I guess that would be a gold flag, not a red flag. So thank you. And thank you, Chrissy, for remembering me.
Good evening. My name is Kami Avalar. I have not forgotten the homeless. I look at them every day. The other day, I have a video of them chopping down a tree, called the police. There's nothing they can do about it. I hope the city is putting away money to repair the damage. The trees, the fences, everything along the rail trail is just being destroyed. I got to watch a naked man stand there and fix his tent. I get, I mean, this is from my house. This is my bedroom window. I get to look at all the time. I get to hear that mini bike driving up and down the trail all hours of the night. They're up all night. They're doing what they do, which is mostly at night. So, and I know you guys are doing some cleanup. It's difficult. It's very difficult for us who live in that neighborhood. And if we can find some other place to put them, it would be so much appreciated. It's my first item. The budget, I do agree there seems to be more transparency needed. Every week, there is, or every week, every other week, there is a, something else that's being added. We need funds for this, we're adding funds for this, we're adding funds for this. I don't ever see a reconciliation. It's just we're adding funds. Where are those funds coming from? I don't know. I don't know where the budget stands because there's not a reconciliation. It would be nice to see that. Also, the city manager position, which has come up, I have concerns about. I didn't, it is a job that requires qualifications. You are dealing with a large budget, a city budget. You are dealing with multiple city codes, local codes, municipal codes, that you should know. It doesn't seem to be a position that on-the-job training would be good enough. Most city managers have either qualifications, lots of experience, or some type of degree that qualifies them for that. I deal with multiple budgets. I deal with multiple general contractors, $35 million a year, and I have 20 years of experience. I could not do my job without that experience behind me. So I am really unclear on how the city manager is managing to do the job with no experience. And it also seems to be a problem with a lot of the city employees. I would encourage the city council to not stick their head in the sand and really talk to the city employees. There's more than just one, it seems. So if there's more than one, there's a problem. And I think you need to address that problem before it grows out of control. The other thing on this, I happened to see on the consensus was the ladder truck. In the June budget, there was a mention by Kathy Ballard that there was nothing in there for a ladder truck. Then I saw an addendum that had a one-line item in there for $200,000 towards the ladder truck. Tonight's agenda says that it will be an add of $29,000 to the budget, when the cost of the ladder truck is, for a used ladder truck, was $689,000. So I'm not getting the math there, and maybe I'm missing something. But if we had a reconciliation, that would be helpful. Thank you. And I do also agree with Kathy and encourage way more people to come. It is, I do commute, and getting here at 6 o'clock is difficult, very difficult. I have to leave work early to get here. So maybe moving it to even 6:30 would be, would be helpful. Thank you.
Hello. Tonight, I am actually here on behalf of New Beginnings Church. Wanted to extend an invitation and announce that they are having their annual Harvest Fund Fest. It will actually be on Tuesday, October 31st, which is Halloween night, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And that's at New Beginnings Church, 821 West L Street. This is an event that they have hosted for over 13 years. It's been an amazing experience. You can expect lots of candy, lots of popcorn. There's face painting, raffle drawing every 15 minutes with a lot of prizes, games to play, trunk or treat. The Los Banas Fire Engine will be there, a Los Banas police car will be there. Sandoval Wood Creations, which has been mentioned previously by another speaker, is donating inflatable games and bounce houses. There's everyone, something for everyone in the family, and the best part is that everything is free. Last year, they had over 2,500 people come through. And we've also invited a few food trucks to come. We want to thank those businesses for agreeing to participate and reduce their pricing for this community activity, and that would be La Patrona, Kona Ice, Sal and Laura Delatorre, and Bentley Hot Dogs. So we encourage and hope and invite all of the city council to come on out, along with everyone else in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, fellow residents. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Shawnee Village, specifically the Anza access to Mercy Springs. As we know, the credit union, which is adjacent to that and sits on that corner, was started years after that Shawnee Village project was initiated. Yet we haven't had any report on that from Mr. Begonia, that's your district. And I'd like a detailed report from the city manager tonight during his reporting time, because we don't have any update. The, it's a safety issue for the children that use that to go to school and for our citizens as a whole. They have their sidewalk in, but again, the builder has not completed their obligation. This is a letter from the city of Los Banos to the builder regarding incomplete public improvements, Shawnee City Village, Anza Way. This letter follows up on the conversation between representatives of Stonefield Homes and Corvett with the city of Los Banos, staff regarding final subdivision map for Shawnee City Village. Specifically, this letter addresses the city's position concerning SR 165, the Anza Way intersection. The city understands that Stonefield's position is that Stonefield has no legal obligation to complete any additional street improvements for the property frontage on SR 165 as part of the Shawnee City Village project. For the reasons discussed below, the city respectfully disagrees. First, Stonefield's tentative map application depicts road improvements along the project frontage with SR 165, including the detailed cross-section of the half-street improvement, the Anza Way to SR 165. These improvements were part of Stonefield's proposed project committed to the city. The same tentative map is presented as the proposed project in the traffic impact analysis prepared by Ken Anderson at Stonefield's direction. Second, when acting upon the tentative map application, the city imposed a condition that the subdivider, Stonefield, obtain an encroachment permit from Caltrans. Given that the tentative map depicted the improvements along SR 165, triggers Caltrans review and approval. Such a condition was entirely reasonable, and further description of those improvements was not necessary. Third, Stonefield submitted final phase maps to the city for approval. This final map includes a written offer of dedication by the developer of the right-of-way. The city council adopted the offer of dedication, subject to satisfactory improvement, a practice expressly authorized by California Recovery and Code Section 66477.1 Alpha. Phase map three depicts public right-of-way improvements along SR 165, which would necessitate a Caltrans encouragement permit. This offer acceptance, this offer and acceptance obligates Stonefield as a subdivider to complete those improvements. There is no dispute that Stonefield has not completed the improvements to the satisfaction of the city. Based upon recent conversations, it is the city's understanding that Stonefield has rejected any obligation to obtain the encouragement permit and complete the SR 165 improvements as depicted in the submittals. It is the city's position that Stonefield has had an obligation to complete the improvements within a reasonable time, which has cleared past, and the project is now built out. Fourth, the fact that the city made a substantial compliance determination for the final map does not terminate the obligation created on the face of the map discussed above, nor is it inconsistent with the subdivision map act. In reviewing the final map act for compliance, the city looks only to city enacted development requirements as the state code speaks in terms of the local agency. Local agency means city, county, or city and county, California Government Code 66420. Thus, at the time of the final map approval, public improvements required by local agency have not been completed and accepted in accordance with statutes established by the local agency by ordinance, California Government Code Section 6642Alpha. Then the subdivider is to enter an agreement with the city and post security. The city does not and could not adopt improvement standards for work subject to Caltrans justification. Thus, the city properly scoped and subdivision improvements agreement to include only those improvements over which the city had exclusive jurisdiction. Thus, the city's determination is substantial conforming based upon matters of which that legal authority follows the subdivision map. legal authority follows the Subdivision Map Act. Objectively, the subdivider had substantially complied, but as noted on the final, final map, additional work remained. So again, this is a notice to the developer that to comply with what they promised in their, uh, uh, submissions. The city has done everything in their legal obligation, and they've given plenty of time. This is, was done under previous, uh, uh, this letter was composed under the previous, uh, city council under Mayor Freya, and I'd like to know what this council has done to continue those conversations to, uh, enforce the obligation of that builder to complete those safety build-outs, specifically that driveway, excuse me, that, uh, walkway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Sally Hughes, and I'm here tonight representing the American Legion Auxiliary. We're, um, fundraising for the Reeds Across America program to provide wreaths to the National Cemetery. And I just wanted to let everyone know they can purchase a wreath for seventeen dollars each from any member, or you can go online. The Reeds Across America program is on December sixteenth out at the San Joaquin Valley National Cemetery. It's a very nice program, and it's at that time that the wreaths are placed on the graves. So if you're interested, see me or any American Legion Auxiliary member. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say something super brief tonight, and that is that I'm still waiting for a report on the animal shelter. We no longer have a city engineer, so that's probably gonna be a big problem when you're trying to build something other than a modular unit. I'd like to request that you reconsider the modular unit and the proposal that you received for six-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars, which is under your one-million-dollar budget, and get that animal shelter put up. If other people want the same thing, they need to get down here and let you know that as well. Second thing is, I still would like an animal advisory commission to be approved, and just gonna come keep saying that over and over and over, and at least in your comments, maybe, address that, address those two things. Don't just leave us hanging out here like we're talking to thin air. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Mike Hughes, I'm the commander of the VFW here in Los Banos. First off, I'd like to thank the city, especially Ivan Mendez from the Police Department and the public works that have worked very diligently this year, so we're gonna have no problems with the Veterans Parade, which is gonna be on November fourth. Um, it's been a, uh, it's been a pleasure dealing with everybody, including the ones in City Hall, to get the permit, to get everything, everything done. So, wanna thank you for that, because everybody else wants to complain, but you guys are doing a good job. Now, I'd like to invite all of you to be a part of our Veterans Parade. We'd love to have you in the parade. We'd love everybody in town to come. It's on November fourth. It's, uh, we always do it the first Saturday in November, so we're not interfering with Merced, Fresno, and all the other ones. Um, we have a lot of, uh, school people involved in it this year. We've got the bands from all four schools, so it's gonna be good. It's gonna be a, uh, it's, it's gonna be a, a great Veterans Parade, and it's a great way to, uh, to salute the Air Force. This year, their, uh, our salute goes out to the, uh, Air Force. Next year is the Coast Guard. We just keep going, going down the, uh, down the, but, but again, I'd like to thank all of you and invite everybody and everybody in the city at home watching or whatever to come to our Veterans Parade. It is a very nice parade. We have a breakfast before the parade at, uh, at the Veterans Memorial Hall. I think the tickets are, um, ten dollars a ticket. I could be wrong on that, because, but, but again, we'd like to, like to invite you to partake in that, and, uh, and thank you very much for the support that the city has given us.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, and mayor, and city manager Josh, and staff. Um, I wanted to go ahead and invite all of you to our Halloween costume for pets. Um, it is the last Saturday of this month between ten and twelve. We will have animals that are adoptable that will be there, and some really wonderful wise advice, um, from others. Um, so please come down. We'll be taking pictures and doing other things. Sorry, need to watch my back. Uh, but you guys have that. So does the, so does Mr. Rivera. Um, sorry, got distracted. But nevertheless, I just want to let you know that we Elks have always tried our hardest to try to provide everything for the community. One thing that we haven't said, and I'm really fantastically excited that we did house our, um, our veteran. Thank you to everybody that really worked on that, including the city, Kristi, and all of her staff and thereafters. Um, the Elks, something that you should know is that the Elks provide a welcome-home kit for all veterans that are moving into any kind of home, or apartment, or even temporary housing. We just need a list of what the wish list is, what's needed, and we will go ahead and get a welcome-home basket and kit together, whatever is needed. So please don't forget to tap into us. Uh, Kristi's gonna do that, and, um, I, um, I absolutely love her. I mean, she is a fantastic arm of the city, and I'm so glad that you guys worked on this and that you guys are providing, um, another arm, um, to aid in the public's, um, wishes. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Coming up here, it's like that TV show, To Tell the Truth, when everybody kind of, kind of fakes like they're gonna get up or not, whether they're really that person. Gotta be old enough to remember that. Sorry. Uh, anyway, uh, I'm here, I'm Roy Todd. I'm here, uh, just as a volunteer representative of the Chamber of Commerce here in Los Banos. Uh, wanted to announce that signups are ready, believe it or not, for the Christmas Parade on Saturday, December second. Uh, this year's, uh, parade theme is Christmas in Candyland. First mixer of October is going to happen, uh, tomorrow. That will be, uh, Chamber Member Keller Williams' Property Team. Uh, finally, on Friday of this week, the twentieth, at five PM, we'll have our, uh, second annual trunk-or-treat event. We'll have treats, crafts, uh, food vendors, costume contests, free giveaways, a Halloween movie. Uh, this is, Michelle wrote this part. Thank you to our sponsors, Arco AM PM and Sutter Health, for helping with this event and making it possible. Then our second mixer of the month will be Chamber Member Altadena Real Estate on Thursday, uh, October twenty-sixth. Uh, also, I wanted to mention, uh, send out, uh, an extra congratulations to Azul Rustica and Gold Valley Health Center on their grand opening ribbon cutting that happened very recently here. Uh, as far as new members are concerned, we have, uh, Central California Legal Services and, uh, Mirasol Imports LLC. Uh, for more information regarding new members on the Chamber hosted events, please contact the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Michelle Sandoval. And then, uh, more of a, sort of like a personal, uh, note, and thank you. We want to congratulate Noah Jones on behalf of the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. We would like to thank Officer Jones for the many years of service with, uh, the Los Banos community. Another personal thank you from the Chamber for always being there bright and early and late at night for all the Chamber events, uh, that we put on. Your work's always very, uh, appreciated and respected. Thank you for all the hard work, dedication, and care you put into your work with the Chamber and the whole city of Los Banos, and congratulations on your retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, mayor, council, and staff. Um, Mary Bill Garcia speaking on behalf of the Los Banos Downtown Association. Uh, we recently had our annual Farm-to-Table, and it was a huge success. We want to thank the City of Los Banos for their help with their year, with this year's events. We would like to thank all of our sponsors for their support year after year. Thank you to all our volunteers for helping with the Farm-to-Table event. This would not have been possible without our volunteers that helped during the event. A special thank you for everyone that showed up, and the Downtown Association is pleased and excited to announce that we have been working on a downtown surveillance system program. We have contracted a security surveillance vendor that will report any suspicious activity to the police department. In addition, we have also added more waste receptacles downtown, as many of you have already noticed. As you take a stroll downtown, you will hear the lovely melodies playing in the background, creating a delightful atmosphere downtown. We want to ensure your shopping experience is safer, cleaner, and more pleasant. So please come join us for our next event, Winter Lighting Celebration. Last year, it was amazing and also a huge success, and this year, we are expecting the same. The date will be November thirtieth, location at nine-oh-seven Sixth Street, from six to nine. So please come join us for Storytime with Santa. Legacy Christian Academy Choir will be performing. We will have food vendors and arts and crafts. So you can download an application from our website, www.downtownlosbanos.com. You can also pick one up at our office at nine-oh-seven Sixth Street. So thank you for our sponsors, Morning Star, Sutter Health, Young's Air Conditioning, and Mid Valley. Sponsors are needed, so you can also download our sponsorship form from our website. So thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close the public forum. All right, move into item seven, consideration of the approval of the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two-four-one-two-three-nine through two-four-one-four-four-eight, in the amount of one million, three-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, four-hundred dollars and fifty-six cents. First quarter investment report for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. City Council Resolution Number six-six-nine-six, approving the IT Managed Services Fixed Agreement with Mid Valley IT. City Council Resolution Number six-six-nine-seven, approving the lease purchase agreement with Delage Land and Public Finance LLC, and print services agreements with Caltronics Business Systems. City Council Resolution Number six-six-nine-eight, rejecting bids for the construction of the Shaughnessy Village Park Project. City Council Resolution Number six-six-nine-nine, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus for a refurbished aerial ladder truck, and adopting a revised budget for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year, as it pertains to expenditures in the amount of twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. City Council Resolution Number six-seven-zero-zero, authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order for the purchase of a new mobile generator through the cooperative procurement contract with Sourcewell, and adopting a revised budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four as it pertains to the wastewater collection fund in the amount of fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. City Council Resolution Number six-seven-oh-one, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with Ronnie's Inc. for turf improvements at Seventh Street Ballpark in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, in project contingency of twenty-five-thousand-three-hundred-two dollars, and amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four budget by increasing the appropriation amount in the Measure H account, one-oh-one-four-five-one-two-nine-zero-seven-one-seven for a hundred thousand dollars. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you so much. The members of the council requesting to pull any items for discussion. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. I'd like to pull item C as in Charles, D as in David, E as in Edward, F as in Frank, and H as in Harry.
And so not G, correct? Not G?
No, just the ones that I had mentioned.
Okay. All right, we'll start with, uh, item C.
Okay, so in reviewing, um, this particular agenda item, um, it indicates that our, um, business with, uh, Mid Valley has been going on since two thousand nineteen. So that's roughly about four years. Um, during that period of time, did we have a contract or an agreement with them?
Like term sheet with them for their services? From two thousand nineteen? That, that was, that was the first, um, agreement or term sheet that, that we have on file with Mid Valley.
So what was that period for? That term period for?
It, it was just for services. It didn't specify specifically, um, a, a duration. I think it was just for IT services going for the city.
And, um, is there, is there a reason why, since, uh, there was no contract apparently, uh, that this is not going out to bid?
This, this going out to bid?
Yeah, yeah, for other IT companies to-
No reason that I can think of. They, they've been, um, supplying our, our IT services for the last four years without any complaint or any, um, need to think of going out to bid for any, any, for any reason.
But we don't have a contract, and now according to this item, uh, the agreement is being extended for one year. So why is it just one year?
Because that, that's what the negotiations with, in that we decided that it would be a one-year contract. We will be, we'll renew this, bring this to council every year. We're, we're timing this to match up with, with, uh, the budgetary requirements of the city for IT. They've been, um, consistently, um, great for, for the city. I, I, I was not here when this was initially, um, executed, so I can't speak to the former finance director, um, or the former city manager, or even the former council, so-
Yeah, and, and I'm not asking you to speak to those issues-
Yeah, I'm, I'm just giving you exactly the only answers I know.
What I'm, what I'm trying to find out is why we have a situation here that should be going out to bid to other, uh, companies that provide these services, and we're extending it. I know that in the past, we've had contractors with vendors, and because of certain circumstances, we may extend it for a while, uh, but eventually, it has to go out to bid.
Okay.
So this seems a bit out of the ordinary to me to just arbitrarily hire a company that, number one, we never had a contract with. It was an agreement, and I know that it was done on an emergency, kind of an emergency basis at that time, but now we're beyond that. And they may provide good services, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, as a government agency, we need to, we need to stay within the parameters of how governments operate and under the law to send out con, you know, um, uh, bids for, for, uh, services that we- bids for for services that we need. And apparently, this is just being continued based on relationship that we have with with the IT company. So I I would suspect that after this one year, that we probably should be taking us out to a bid. When I looked at the the staff report, one of the things that I didn't see that was in the written contract is they are charging us a COLA of $521 a month as well. That was not in the body of the report. That was left out. So the total contract that we're going to be paying annually, I mean, on a monthly basis to them, is $18,113 times 12 for a year. Excuse me, is $217,356. And then after one year, they have an increased COLA of 4.5% after the one this one-year agreement. So I I hope that the city would be right in doing their business, that when this one-year one is up, that we take it out to bid, because that would be the appropriate thing to do.
So my understanding, just with working in government, is IT is one of those things where you have to have continuity of operations. It's not like you can shut the internet off and then put a bid out, and then somebody turn it back on a month later.
But we have time now, and and so this with this one-year agreement, it gives the city time to ramp up and be prepared to go out to bid next time.
Well, I'm saying, I think our our city attorney, there may be some research done on how that process works as far as the requirement for that.
Professional services usually are not bid, but they are subject to requesting proposals. So professional services aren't necessarily awarded to the lowest bid. There's a number of factors that go into awarding a professional services contract, and the city has policies regarding that, but it's not a it's not a bidding situation. It's the city wants to. The city can request proposals at the end of a contract term.
All right, thank you for clarifying that.
And with that being said, I know that the city here, more recently, under professional services, have moved away from services that have been provided to us to other agencies so that it's not out of the ordinary, Mr. Vaughn.
I would say it'd be kind of out of the ordinary, because if it's not broke, why fix it, right? I mean, if if they're giving us the service we want, and it's a professional service that our attorney tells us, we don't have to spend staff time going out to bid and doing a lot of extra work for it.
I just said that we have recently moved from professional services that our city has been receiving from a reputable company and without question, and it's been changed. So it's it's not something that hasn't been done. Okay, and so I'm I'm complete with that one. And I'll move on to item D. So this is a a lease for copy machines that our city needs. And it looks like the lease that we had has is expired, and that was from 10 years ago. And the city seems to be moving towards using purchase cooperatives such as Sourcewell rather than, again, going out to bid. And I guess for me, going out to bid means that our local companies, not necessarily in Los Banos, but in our surrounding areas, or maybe out of the area, has a chance to bid on this. But with companies like Sourcewell, I'm not convinced that we're getting the best price. I know that they're supposed to be working with other government agencies as a consortium to get multiple bids and hopefully give another government agency a better price on something. But I don't know that that is particularly happening with this company, because there's been no evidence to show me that we are getting the best bid for our money. We had, I think, a resident from the community had brought up something that I that I had a question on, and I'm hoping Mr. Kuhn can ask answer this on page 67 of Schedule B for the leasing. There are 11 machines, I think, that they're going to be taking back, and I think those were purchased from a different company. Are we going to be getting any refunds or rebates back on that?
I think there's a little confusion. When I came in here, the lease arrangement with Xerox Financial was operating in nature. So to unwind this, I requested some some expertise to come in, and and we reached out to Xerox Financial and the fact that we can't stop the payments until the machines are are returned. Thus, the reason why they're coming in and taking these machines and and then shipping them back to Xerox Financial. There's there are different financing companies, and in the past, we had had this this relationship was 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 not the same as this one, where this is actually a lease purchase, where we own these machines after five years with a fair, very low money factor going through Sourcewell. You we I was was more than competitive with with any other leasing company. And it allows us to invest the funds, you know, at a higher rate. So factoring in a lot of things, it made more sense. Plus, the way the budget was approved is the as you notice, the the cost per month matched in with the budget budgetary numbers that we submitted with this current budget. So there would be no required budget amendment for this. So there was a lot of thought to go through this, and and first, we had to unwind exactly what these machines were and where they were financed. So once we found that out, we reached out to Xerox Financial, and the the terms were that the we would be paying for these, like, as a rental, pretty much, until the machines were returned. So we're we're trying to expedite that and return those machines as quickly as possible. At the same time, we reached out to all the departments and asked, you know, which machines do you feel comfortable with? We we shopped out different types of machines, cannons, other makers, and this seemed to be the most seamless in terms of not having to bring training in and pay for that, because the machines are basically newer models than the ones we have. But now, instead of just renting them, we will purchase them over a five-year term.
Okay, so when did our lease expire?
It doesn't. It's 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 a it's a rental payment.
Okay.
So so we it was a five. It was a five-year rental payment, and it this this agreement that you're talking about is not 10 years old. It's it's just over five. So when I came here, we I had to unwind two things. One was this RFP process that was done by the former IT department head, and then the prior financial director did did another. Don't know if it went through RFP on this one or not, but I think it may have. But it it turned out that we were trying to identify if we own the machines or not, because that wasn't clear when we when we started looking at this, and that we later determined that these machines were, in fact, on a month-to-month until their return.
Okay, so the staff report says in 2013, the city approved an agreement between Lucas Business Systems, but that that lease did now expire. That's what I was trying to ask.
So that's a different service, right? You have the the leasing and or the lease purchase or the renting of the machines from a financial company. Then you have a service company that comes in and maintains the machines, and those are predicated on per copy, you know, so they they supply toner if the thing if the machine breaks or if they have problems. They they it's a service agreement. They come in and they fix that. That that has been in existence for since then. So for whatever reason, I'm not sure, but I reached out to several people, and one of the older representatives of Lucas, who now works for Caltronics, helped with this whole situation in terms of of bringing this all together. In terms of the service contract, as we look for on on a per average, per machine, per copy, black and white color, it's it's basically like the price is frozen in time. It's 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 not going to change significantly, if not at all. In some cases, it's cheaper per copy for some of the machines in this new service contract. So this staff report has two different tranches, so to speak, to this. You have the financing lease purchase arm of this and then the service contract. Delange is the is the financing company. Caltronics will be our service company.
Okay, so again, you had mentioned earlier that the machines we have now, we're paying like a month-to-month rent.
Yes.
So those are the ones that are under Lucas Business Systems from 2013?
They're they're yes, right now, we're terminating that agreement with this tonight, if it's approved, and the machines will then be sent to Xerox Financial, who's a financial company, of which, at that time, the city will no longer have any liability attached to those machines, to those old machines. So now, we're bringing in brand-new machines, similar in terms of of scope of what we currently had. We didn't go out and get, you know, the Cadillac of 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 copier machines. We we thought through this. We the the two items that that staff, what we put out a survey, asked is that that there was would be similar in nature, and then in terms of dimensional requirements for where those were going to go, because, as you know, the police are moving out of their buildings. So those those were the things that that were done, and then that has got us to this point.
Okay, and based on my calculations, we're paying $178,528.83, and that includes the $11,213.43 in tax that we have to pay, which is, I'm assuming, based on this amortization of payment, that the tax has to be paid upfront. It's not going to be financed.
I think when you finance something, you can you can finance the the tax through through the amortization.
Because the tax is not financed on this amortization.
Okay, well, then it's paid upfront. I.
Was that in the agreement?
Well, you have to pay tax no matter.
Well, I understand that.
I could go back and and I guess amortize the sales tax, but no matter, it's a lease purchase. So, yeah, so it's not a lease to residual value or market value. So, yes, we would be paying, sorry, I apologize, we would be paying the sales tax upfront for the purchase.
Any other questions on site?
Okay, so can we move on to item 7E? Yes. In the staff report, it indicates that following a bid protest, that basically, you know, is recommended that this project go out to bid again. So what was the issue for the city having to put this back out to bid? What was the protest about?
Good evening, Councilmember Lewis. So this product, this this item is regarding the rejection of bids for the construction of the Shaughnessy Village Park Project. We had put this out to bid, opened bids, and September 8th, 2023. Shortly after we opened the bids, the the second lowest bidder did submit a bid protest. The bid protests revolved around items such as the lowest bidder had placed a driver's license rather than a contractor's license. The contractor's license was placed in a separate section of of the the document. There were some other minor issues. There was a question about subcontractor. There was no subcontracted listed, and and we did request the lowest bidder to clarify that item. As we did go through the appeal process, we just identified some irregularities like that, that we just felt that it wouldn't be in the best interest of the city to move forward with with this bid. The second bidder or the second lowest bidder failed to have a notarized signature, which, if you recall, is an item that we have previously rejected bidders on. And the the third and fourth lowest bidders, the other two remaining, both had bids that were quite a bit out of range for the the budget of the Shaughnessy Village Park Fund. And so that's why the city recommends rejecting the bids and intends to to place the item back out to bid, hopefully later this month, in order to get that project done as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and if we can move to item 7F?
Yes.
So we have a shortfall a shortfall of $29,800 on this project. And it's coming from, there's a request. Let's see here. There was a request from a specific item budget number for 243422100755 to complete the purchase. But in the next paragraph, it also says there was a surplus for apertures, surplus apertures that were sold for $223,000. So is that $223,000 used upfront to to help purchase this truck, and we still have a $29,000 deficit left over? I'm not sure, because.
Why don't you start, and I'll I'll back up.
Well, let me just preface it by saying this. There's from the fire department budget, there's $800,000 coming from that. And then there there is $200,960 that is coming from the general fund, and then $50,000 from Measure P, and then $549,000 and some change coming from the fire capital fund improvement fund. So all of that adds up to the $800,000, but we're short $29,800, which staff is asking for us to take it out of another fund budget.
All right, Councilmember Lewis. So within that fund, you talked about the $223,000. When I came became fire chief here back in November last year, we looked at our apparatus and looked at our fleet. So one of the things we did was to minimize some of our fleet and selling those through an apparatus company, and that was the best way to get our best value out of our used apparatus, so we could purchase newer apparatus that would that would fit our mission. And so therefore, those funds were in there that we received from the sale of various apparatus that we had as surplus.
So so one one quick explanation in terms of appropriations. Even though you receive money in, you still, if there's not enough that was appropriated at the budget time, you have to go through a budget appropriation. So the the inflows of things, you have to treat differently than the appropriations that you guys approve. So so that's the reason why you can't just say, okay, we got this, but so we're good. You you have to go through the process of legally appropriating those funds for the expenditure. So so in terms of how we'll report to you, how the fund activity plays out at the end of the year, which will will happen, that you'll see those inflows in revenues, and then you'll see the the budget appropriations along with the expenditures in in that line item.
Yeah, I realize they have to be accounted for coming in.
Okay, I just I wanted to make sure.
I'm just trying to find out that for the additional money from the sales, once they went in and they were accounted for, is part of that money being used to purchase this truck?
And you and you answered that?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So would it would it be all of it or just part of it? I guess I need to ask that.
Part of it, to be able to complete the funding.
Yeah.
So. So, just some general questions I'd like to ask you, Chief. What is the average amount of time or years of service that you can get out of a, a fire truck, such as the one that we just recently are, are trying to purchase tonight?
We'll be able to get 15 years out of this newer apparatus. NFPA recommends that fire apparatus be replaced about every 10 years. So at 10 years, it would go into what they call reserve status. It would be used as a backup. And then at 15 years, or at 150,000 miles, they usually recommend that you replace them.
Okay. So since this truck has, I believe it was in 2014-
That's correct.
-when they purchased it. So next year, it'll be at 10 years. So does that mean we can get roughly about five years out of this?
We should be able to get 10 years out of this, even at, at reserve status. So our truck will be what they call cross-staffed. It isn't something that's staffed 24/7, but is available for calls. So we're not going to be using it for every call. We're not going to be using it for every service call. It may be used primarily for our fire responses, our rescue responses, because this will assume some of our rescue duties, and will be cross-staffed with the personnel at the station.
Well, you know, I know our staff really needs this piece, piece of equipment. It's, we've just gone way too long without a ladder truck. And on the most recent fire that we had this year, it just barely made it out on the street. I wish we had, and I know it takes somewhere between three and four years out to get a new truck, and the cost is somewhere between 1.8 million and $210. I, I really wish we had that money to be able to purchase a new ladder truck for our firefighters. But I, I'm hoping that we're going to start budgeting here going forward for whatever equipment they need, because we can't operate our city on old equipment or equipment that's just sitting in storage because it's, it's nonusable. So I, I, I will support this for our fire department, because I think it's important. But I, I think it's time that we start working towards new equipment and looking at setting side funds and retiring equipment that needs to be put out of service.
You know, great job. Great work on locating this truck. Yes, that, the new ones are 1.8 to $2 million today. The trucks are not ready for over four years. So that 1.8 to 2 million would probably double within the next four years. We need the truck now. They have worked really hard to get where they're at now. And the 29,000 that we're going to put with it tonight is just little change to get that truck here now. So great job, Chief, all the department heads that worked on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. And I, and I love your strategy for this, because we needed it yesterday, right? So the fact that you found one, you know, it's, it's not brand-new, that's okay, because they do take a long time to build and get in, into service. So, you know, I'm sure Chase Bank and Miller and Lux and those buildings are secretly saying thank you. But yeah, this is, this has been a long time coming. And so thank you for bringing this, this forward to this council.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Has worked hard on this project, and his staff needs it. And I support the fire, the fire and our police department wholly. So yes, you did a very good job on this. But this still does not mean that this couns, this council and previous councils should have been on board to get a, a fire truck prepared for you. We could have had a fire that was extensive, you know, in some of our capital downtown. And I watched the fire that we had this year on the corner of Bacheko and Center Avenue, where our fighter fires were on their knees, angling the fire hose up so that they could put that fire out. So I applaud them for a job well done in handling that situation. But it could have, it could have saved that building, or probably caused it not to be damaged as, as much if we had had the appropriate equipment out there for them. Okay, so- Okay, I'd like to move to item 7H. First, I'd like to point out, because I'm a bit confused, that in the subject area, it states that the contract amount is 600, I mean, $168,686. But when I look at the bid, the bids that are attached, it says it's $168,148. So I'm trying to figure out which one it is.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So this item is the Seventh Street Ballpark turf improvements. So I apologize for that. The, the number in the title is incorrect. It's the number that is inside of the discussion area of the, the staff report. So the, the number for the bid is 168,467.13. The reason for the discrepancy between that and the bid opening number of 168,148 is because when we go through our bid documents, it is, there is a total provided by the contractor, and that is based off of what they are putting into the bid on each item. But that is based off of, the, the, the number that is final off of that is based off of, of the, the quantity, rather than, like, it's, it's based off of the unit price, rather than what they're multiplying that by. So for example, in a bid, there might be 100 square feet of concrete, right? And they're going to give a price for that 100 square feet. So if the contractor enters that in wrong, the, the, it reverts to whatever that unit price is. And so that's why there's a slight discrepancy of about 300 bucks there, is that there was most likely a rounding issue on that. So that's, that's most likely what, what occurred at that point. But the, for bid purposes, it goes back to unit price. So I do apologize for the title, the title, subject being incorrect, but the, the actual number is the 168,467.13.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So with, with either one of those bids, it's still under $250,000? So why are we asking for roughly about $56,000 over the bid?
Yeah, absolutely. So part of this project is the base bid that Ronnie, that the contractor provided, 168,467.13. Another aspect of it is the contingency that we're requesting. We did ask for 15% contingency because, primarily because when we worked on the bathroom project at that ball, at that ballpark in 2019, we ran into a lot of issues at that park. That park has always been neglected and, and primarily taken care of on a volunteer basis through the PAL programs, things like that. It's a property owned by Merced County, so it hasn't had a lot of investment in it. We found a lot of things underground. So I, I anticipated that there might be some issues with that. So we did want to request a full 15% there. The additional remaining funding is because we are, the, part of the project is going to be standardizing the dimensions of the, the infield diamonds. Currently, if you go out there, you'll see that second base, for example, is only a couple feet from the outfield. So we're going to be standardizing those, those diamond dimensions. And part of that is going to be bringing additional dirt. We decided that it would be most cost-effective if our own park staff provided that. So that'll be outside of the bid, the base bid of this project. And our park staff will, will purchase the dirt and install it themselves.
Okay. And so also, there is a 15% contingency fee requested for administering the contract. Is the city paying itself?
No. That was in, in contingency. When we put this, this item together, there were still some, some question marks of where we would be at as far as a public works department goes. We do fortunately have Jose on as our interim public works director. So I don't anticipate a lot of construction management, so I don't anticipate that funding to be expended. However, when we put this, this package together, we wanted to make sure that we had that available in case that came together. But no, there'll be no paying ourselves, or paying, the city paying itself, essentially.
Okay. I, I just want to make, make, make sure that that's clear. And-
Yeah. And I just wanted to thank-
I, I would kind of like to recommend that, now that we have a public works director on, on board, that we take that out of, out of the, part of the request, because it, it just, it just appears to be that the, the city is paying itself. I know that in the past, when we garner contracts, like with CDBG and outside contracts, we charge an administrative fee for administering that money that doesn't, you know, that comes from the state or some other government agency. But it seemed quite odd that we would want, put 15, want to put 15% in a contract of our, of taxpayer dollars to pay our, the city to do a job that we get paid to do.
Yeah. I, I understand that. But this, this is very different than that scenario. This is, the, the, where you see the word administration of the contract, that is purely that the public works director will end up signing the contract documents. There is no, that, that's, that's, it's purely authority from, from their standpoint. It, really, under any of our projects, that wouldn't really be applicable. But under this particular project, it's, if that's not what that's referencing, what's built into this, this project was, was some additional funding for, for those purposes. But if, if council feels that you need to take that out, that's perfectly fine. But that's ultimately-
Well, well, you're, we're already asking for an additional $56,000. I just think it, it just, it doesn't show in a good light to the public that we're also asking for an additional 15%. And, you know, I can understand the contingency fee for the vendor that we're hiring to do this, Ronnie's contract. But for the, for the city, that just looks odd to me. So that, that's my recommendation, is that be taken out. I, I think those, those were the two things that, you know, were awkward for me on this contract, is the discrepancy in what we were going to be actually paying on the contract based on the staff report and the bid, and also the 15%. So-
Before I hand it over to Councilmember Lambert, Joe, I just want to let you know, I did find one other typo. It says Seventh Street Ballpark, not Noah Jones Field. So, and that's okay, because I know this was prepared prior to. So I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Yeah, I don't, I'm surprised. But no, I just, I just want to give you a hard time. And again, just thank you that the fact that I know that this field has gone a long time without anything being done. And we have so many kids that participate in PAL. And so I'm sure they will appreciate, you know, they're on a, on a renovated field. So thank you for that. Councilmember Lambert?
Yeah. Thank you. Before we vote on this, I, I just want to clarify on, on item F. Just to let everyone know, our ladder truck was at that fire. And that ladder truck is what saved it from completely doing what happened. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that our fire department was able to get our weak fire truck out there, and our ladder truck was there operating. They weren't on, some were on their knees having to do it, but I also saw them up on top of the ladder, doing what they had to do up there. So just wanted to clarify that. Thanks, Chief.
And that's the ladder truck from 1991, right?
Yes.
Just making sure. All right. So do I have a, yes, Councilmember-
I have a question on item H. So let's just say we have some funds left over from this project. What happens to those funds? Do they get absorbed back in, or how do they?
Unused funds will just roll over into the, the Measure H. This is out of a Measure H fund.
So be returned.
Roll at the end of the fiscal year back to-
If we're short on funds, what ends up happening? Do we have to come forward again and ask for more money?
Yes. So, so our appropriations expire every, every year.
Okay. So it makes more sense to overestimate than underestimate?
Yes, in-
A little bit.
Certain cases, yes. Unless we know the exact number, and you were confident that there's, yeah. But yes, for most cases.
Thank you, guys.
So thank you. So my question to our council, if, under this, under this request for revitalization of the park, if monies are in certain categories, they can't be pulled out of those categories and spent on something else. Am I correct on that, or am I incorrect?
Do you want me to chime in on that? Or you, you addressed the council, so-
No, I addressed the city attorney, so-
Oh, okay. Well-
But if you, if you want to answer, it's fine. So I'm, I just want to make sure, usually when there's something in a line budget to do a certain thing, that it, it has to stay in there, and you can't cross it over and use it in some other area.
That is, that is not entirely correct. There, there can be budgetary transfers that can be made. However, in terms of, like, Measure H and general fund, they're both considered discretionary funds. Measure H is not, not a, a restricted special measure. It, it's discretionary. So in terms of that, the way that works is those budgetary transfers can happen. They're, they're not to, like, a very large extent. I, I believe it, it's capped at a certain amount per fund. The city attorney would know that. I think it's 50 grand or something. So, so in terms of this, there's that. But you can't just then transfer these appropriations between different funding types and, and special funds. There's restricted funds, there's, you know, enterprise funds. These all are stand, standalone, so you can't do that. We have to come back and say, we request appropriations for this specific thing. So in, in terms of this, that's why I thought I could chime in and help specifically just with this.
Okay. So the, the additional funds that are being requested around, you know, 56,000, what fund budget would that be coming out of?
It's a, it's from, I, I think it might be more like 25,000, but it's, it would be from Measure H, and it's in the capital line item for landscape and irrigation improvements.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Pushing buttons over here. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second the motion.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Nice work, everybody. All right, move on to item 8, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So item 8A is a public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of acceptance of development impact fee report for fiscal year 2019 to 2023 in accordance with Assembly Bill 1600. For this, we'll go to Finance Director.
So AB 1600 is a legal requirement that allows us to report these funds to council on an annual basis. The report gives a brief description of the fees, the amount of the fees, the beginning and ending balance of those accounts, and the amount of fees and interest earned in those accounts. These, these accounts are all reported in separate funds, except for the water and wastewater diff. Those are reported as restricted cash in those funds. This is the fee schedule. As earlier on in, in this year, these increased, I believe it was in April. These are the current fees as they have been approved. This is a statement of revenue of all of the different developer impact fees. This shows basically the activity for the fiscal year ending 2023. Now, these are, these are unaudited figures. And, but since the, the way the, the timing of the audit was working, we had to have this report to council before the end of the calendar year, and thus, we're presenting it, it now. So the big part of this report is, is a five-year requirement. So the whole point of the developer impact fee is, is to pay for the impact of that development. And there's a percentage of that that gets applied to that, and then- applied to that, and then existing development, which pays for other impact through other funding, whether it be, you know, general fund monies or special monies that come in specifically for capital purpose. So, in this report, we basically outline all of the fees, the revenues and expenditures by year, and we organize the schedule so that any fee that comes in goes out first. So, as we get more into this report or this presentation, you'll be able to see that. And with any funds that are over a five-year requirement, a finding has to be put forth. And within that, you have to identify, you know, why that happened, demonstrate a relationship of why that happened, and identify any other funding sources that would allow for the completion of the projects that are identified to resolve that five-year requirement. So, the following funds that did not have any deposits held more than five years was the police, primarily because of the police station. A lot of the impact fees that were built up in this fund have been expended for the purpose of building the new police station. Basically, all of our other diff funds had a five-year deposit maximum. So, the fire facilities diff is, again, within all of these developer impact fees, there was a nexus study that was done back in 2019 of that. There were a variety of things that were brought forth to the consultant that said, okay, through council initiative or just general need, these are the expenditures that are going to have to be financed to some degree by these fees. And so, every single one of these panels that go through each individual explanation of these developer impact fees have that in there. But for the fire facilities, that was pretty much to build a new fire facility, of which we are currently in the planning stages of the EOC, which is going to have developer impact fees attached. That's basically the third fire station. There's also other equipment and other acquisition that can be done through the nexus study that allow for these facility diffs to be used at a certain percentage, usually lower than 100%. So, within this, you'll see that there is a five-year activity. Below the line there, it shows how the deposits are paid out. In essence, the expenditures reduce the first in fees. And what that gives you is at the bottom line item, the deposit over five years. In this case, the fire facility had about 546 grand. That was in excess. So, we've identified a facility. Currently, the estimation for that facility is about 12.5 million. We've secured 5 million in direct financing from the state, of which that funding has increased in value due to interest that we've invested that. And we are currently in the process of identifying the shortfall of 7.5 million, either be through remaining funds that will be available through the state or through some kind of lever, whether it be like an IBank debt issuance or something related to debt. We do have some cash on hand. We do also have the Measure P fund, which has a building component to it, that those things can be leveraged, but it's still pretty early stages in terms of this development. Police facilities, again, this nexus study, most of this was for the police station. There was some equipment and radio stuff that was identified there as need that would be impacted by new development and the need to expand basically the communications net of the police force. As you can see, there's no five-year amount in this fund. Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec, again, the nexus study was done, and most of these fees were for acquiring new parks, and I believe there was a pool that was mentioned, and there is a skate park that is mentioned. But again, as we go through and the city changes its requirements for how the city wants to recreate and what's needed, there may be a necessity to go back to council and redo some of these and maybe build a different nexus because the city's need changes, the council's, I guess, planning changes, so to speak. This has a considerable amount that's built into that, and that's primarily because at this point, well, there's not a lot. There's 48,000. There was a considerable amount. And there are some things that, as I've gone through this last year, have identified other park fees that have been transferred in the next year. But for this report right now, there's about 48,000 of excess, and the Parks and Rec Department has identified the Pacheco Park, an improvement of the Pacheco Park for the use of these funds. So, the water facilities is a difficult one because water, and as we go into water and wastewater, these facilities are very expensive, and they take a long time to plan, and they take a lot of additional money to meet the requirements. Some of the infrastructure that we have in the city is very, very old, and I believe that over the next five years, there's going to be a considerable amount of appropriations needed to, and part of this will be these developer impact fees that will be spent over the next five years. So, as you can see, there's close to, there's over $7 million that has been accumulated in here over five years. We've identified well 16, which is going through testing at the moment, and for a variety of things, water flow, water quality, all of these things. And then there's, of course, the specter of chromium 6, which we don't know exactly what's going to happen with this and what kind of infrastructure and how we're going to have to treat every single well. We have quite a few wells in this city, and each one would have to be treated. So, as you can see, there's about $315 million of identified potential costs associated with future capacity that was identified in the nexus report. So, it's a considerable amount of money. Now, again, these things are long-term capital projects and can take, you know, anywhere between five and 10 years to construct. Sewer is another one, or wastewater is how we have it in our general ledger. Similarly, this is for, again, the capacity expansion if needed, if the city wants to continue to grow. That impact's going to have primarily a larger impact, I believe, because of where we are as far as capacity in our wastewater. As you can see, there's about 3.5 million that was deposited over the five years. And again, most of this will be for rehabilitation, which is pipe casing and replacement of piping, sewer lift stations that need to be done, and in eventuality, a tertiary system if needed, if we, you know, go that direction. The nexus report has identified about 75 million of potential costs associated with future capacity. So, again, you know, the amount that I said that's over the five years isn't the total amount that's on hand. The total amount that's on hand in these two funds is between about 11 and 13 million, and there's additional cash in those funds that we build up through either user fees or other things to, you know, plan for the eventuality of replacement of these two entities. Sorry, that was a lot of words in one go. So, again, we, a new developer impact fee that was brought in was the stormwater drainage. So, this was pulled out from the wastewater because they were trying to bring a little bit more of identification as to how the basins and worked with wastewater and dealing with not just the infiltration of stormwater into the wastewater system, but trying to create this more as a standalone. And this was done in the 2019 impact fee study. Currently, in excess, there's about 45,000 in excess of five years, and basically, this is going to be utilized for the central city detention basin, where it's going through design phases and acquisition of lands and other. It's still going to need additional funds in conjunction with this once construction begins, sorry. So, traffic, traffic is one of the largest, I think, areas, mostly identified projects, multiple projects. And basically, this facilitates all aspects of construction management and transportation flow systems sufficient to accommodate for any growth and impact to our traffic system. There is about 4.5 million that is built up in excess of these, and we've identified these projects as principal projects that these impact fees will be used. Now, once we identify and go through, again, you have to go through a design phase, there's a construction phase, there's all kinds of phases that are identified with this. And once we identify both the funding requirements and, you know, the total cost of the projects, then these get mixed in together into a capital projects fund for that specific project. So, if it were like Pioneer, for instance, once that certain phase happens, there'll be a capital projects fund specifically set up for that, of which we will transfer out of the diff funds, and we will be showing you either grant funds or other types of regional funds that come into that to fully finance that project. The general governmental facilities funds, these are the funds, these were all combined a few years back with the nexus study. At one time, the fees were split out in terms of corporate yard, city hall, and now they're all just lumped into general government. Here's the five-year activity. There's 1.3 roughly that is in excess of five years. The city is intending on spending this amount on upgrades to city hall and renovating the annex across the street. The project is really in the initial planning phase. Some design has been done, but the project is expected to be about 5 million, but right now, it's too early to really put a number on. And once we have all of those numbers together and we start executing contracts or whatever, additional funds will be brought in. And again, this will be put into its own capital projects fund, and most of the additional funding will probably come from the general fund. There's a 3% administration to all of this that was written into the nexus, and this is to do stuff like this where we're reporting to you, plus all of the different things in relation to what we're doing right now. Let me go back. There's a five-year activity summary. There's 62,000 in excess. We are currently in a new ERP system, Tyler Technologies Financial Software. The anticipated cost of full implementation with licensing and everything is expected to be about 500,000. The project commenced last year, and we're ongoing to the delight of the finance staff and HR, yes. So, that's basically the activity in all of the developer impact fees. We kind of flew through this, but it's in the report. The only other notes to this report are we have to report any refunds of developer fees that were given to developers, and there have been none to report. So, that is also a requirement under the California Government Code section. So, that was a pretty long-winded explanation of all this. Basically, we want you to accept this. I did as much as I could to explain it to the public. So.
All right, so I'll open the public hearing. If anybody has questions and/or comments come forward.
Sure. Yeah.
Facilities, specifically the police annex building. What kind of upgrades are we doing to that? Again, in light of the fact that we're opening the police, new police building, and the idea was to consolidate all these various, you know, how scattered the police department is. So, I want to know, are we doing it to upgrade it for police services or for some other function?
No, it will not be. We are, well, we're in the early stages, so we've done a lot of meetings and feasibilities. A lot of it, I believe, was going to be for development services, so there would be for planning and other, possibly some expansion of the engineering side of Public Works. So, it would be more, it would be general government. Otherwise, if we were utilizing that for police services, we would have to use the police facilities impact. So, we have to be very careful in terms of it has to be related to a nexus of how to use that. So, yeah.
That was some of the base of my question, and also the fact that we're consolidating, so it would, you answered my question.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, no problem.
Anyone else? All right, I'll close the public hearing. All right, and the recommendations, receive staff reports and accept the report as submitted. So, no.
Yeah.
No action. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item nine. Oh, do we need a motion? Oh, all right, I'll accept one of those. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive report as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Notice, item nine, notice and announcement of vacancies and appointment of council members to serve on the selection committees for the following commissions? Sure, please.
The Airport Advisory Commission will have three vacancies, two two-year terms expiring December 31, 2025, and one unexpired term expiring December 31, 2024. And the next up in the rotation is Councilmember Begonia for that. I don't know if you want me to read them all, or you want to take them one at a time?
Yeah, we can read them all. Yeah.
Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee, two vacancies, two two-year terms expiring December 31, 2025, and Councilmember Lambert is next for that one. Measure P Committee, there are two vacancies, three three-year terms expiring December 31, 2026, and those appointments are made by the police and fire chiefs. Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies, two two-year terms expiring December 31, 2025, and next up will be Councilmember Jones. Tree Commission, three vacancies, three two-year terms expiring December 31, 2025, and the next up for that one is Councilmember Lewis.
And then, do we have the recommendations from police and fire chief?
This is just, we're going to announce the vacancies, and then people will apply.
Gotcha.
And then, once police and fire figure out who they want, we'll bring that to you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, thank you. I believe that I've sat on the Tree Commission, and we did an interview last year on this, so I'm wondering why I'm rotating back to the Tree Commission again.
I think the one you sat on was because another council member wasn't available.
Okay, all right.
But it's totally up to the mayor and the council on who sits on what commission. This is just the rotation list that we work off of.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Do they have any? Don't everybody jump at once? All right. Does anyone have a preference regarding any of these? Okay. So, for, okay, it's Councilmember Begonia, except in the airport. Councilmember Lambert will be on the Measure H Citizens and Oversight Committee. Councilmember Jones, Parks and Recreation. And Councilmember Lewis, the Good Tree Commission. Yes, okay, thank you. All right. And then, again, we'll get the recommendation made by. And then again, we'll get the recommendation made by. Okay, so do I have a motion? Let's start with nine A. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Lambert.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to appoint Councilmember Begonia.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Jones. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion on nine B. Councilmember Begonia.
I'll make the motion to appoint Councilmember Lambert for the nine B Measure H citizens oversight committee.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones. Sorry. All right, all those in favor? Aye, all right, nine C. Nope, let's move on to D, Parks and Recreation, Councilmember Jones. Do I have a, Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to accept Councilmember Jones.
All right. And Councilmember Begonia?
A second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, all right. And E, tree commission, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Begonia.
I'll make the motion to accept Councilmember Lewis for nine E for the tree commission.
All right, Councilmember Lambert?
No, second.
All those in favor? Aye, all right. Motion passes, thank you. Anything else we need to do on nine? No, all right. Ten has been removed. So let's move on to item eleven, city manager report.
No reports tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, report update on Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District and Los Manos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. So for this, we'll start first with Councilmember Lewis. All right, thank you. I'm in the same boat as you, MCAG meeting is tomorrow. So, and Peninsula Clean Energy will be coming up. So, Councilmember Jones, anything on downtown?
No, our director, Mary Bell, she pretty much summed up everything that we've been working on. This downtown surveillance program that we've been working on for quite some time is actually going to be really cool. It's live monitoring. So if there's somebody or something that doesn't look right in the middle of the night, it motions in, live technician on the other, ENC it. They can verbally try to see if they'll move along. If not, they'll call into dispatch. So it should deter a lot of night issues or evening issues that we have. So, and that's it for the downtown association.
All right, thank you. Move on to item thirteen, city council member reports. Councilmember Begonia?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones.
Yes, I'd like to just thank staff again. I know they've been getting quite a few, quite a bit of the things. They've been working hard on getting a lot of these little, what we would call routine maintenance items taken care of, trees, painting, you name it, roads. And what's unique is that they haven't really been done before. I've been asking for our general fund trees to be trimmed up from day one of me being on council five years ago. And no matter who we've had in here, they just have not been getting done. I've never once asked the city manager to do them. And he's taken upon himself to get it done. He sees an issue, he tackles it. One of the biggest issues that we have with government is when we ask a question to staff sometimes, why do we do something a certain way? The answer is, well, this is the way we've always done it. They've never questioned, challenged, or tried to get creative on things. But now, we have new team members that are getting creative, they're being proactive and just getting things done. And so I'm excited, just this little stuff just makes a big difference. And I'm a firm believer, if you can't take care of the little stuff, none of the big stuff will ever happen. So thank you, staff, thank you to your team members for getting on this stuff and making it happen. So much appreciated.
All right, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Again, I would just like to let the public know, whether you're by television, YouTube, or those that are here in the audience tonight, that we spent some, almost one hundred, a million five in projects under resolutions and the public has no say in it. It really amazes me that we have nothing on the agenda that the public can speak to when it comes to spending their taxpayer dollars. And under the Brown Act, it has to be things that are on the consent agenda that are routine. But when you're spending a lot of money, the taxpayers need to be able to have a say. I know that the Buster Posey Park was renamed this weekend. And so I want to congratulate Noah on the renaming, renaming the park after him. But the one thing I found quite surprising is that it was announced that there were three people that made the decision on the naming of the park. And that was the city manager, the mayor, and Councilmember Jones. And when Buster, when we had the community come forward and solicit for the Buster Posey grant to redo the turf on that, on the northeast side of the park, the community came out and we ended up getting that money to redo the turf over there. We're paying to have the whole area redone. I just hope that when it's redone, that there's going to be some maintenance in there other than just mowing, blowing and mowing, because the weeds are going to come back. They're, they are innate. And so we had a beautiful side of the park over there when we got the grant from Buster Posey to do the remodel. But as things go on, we generally don't have the wherewithal to take care of things. And when you have parks, professional parks have to be maintained. They have to be fed, they have to be weeded. There are things that have to be done on a regular basis in order for that park to stay in the condition that you want it in and to be safe for the people that are playing the activities in that park. But the one, the one thing that disturbed me a bit is that the renaming of that park did not come to council for a vote. There were three people that made that decision outside of the council. And these are reasons why we have the Brown Act, so that when there are things that are changed within our city or things that need to be voted on, it's supposed to be done publicly. The Brown Act was created for the specific reason of not having closed-door decisions made about things that happen within the city. So I just, I found that quite disturbing. I would like to, I see on one of our agenda product, agenda items that we had an interim public works engineer staff, Jose Lamas, or Lemus? Did I pronounce that right?
Jose Lemos.
Lemos, okay, thank you. Welcome, I didn't know that you were on board, no one informed me. But I want to congratulate you for coming to Los Manos to service our community. And that's all I have this evening, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may have to take a drink before this one because I get to get started here. First of all, I want to recognize, the item didn't get pulled off the agenda, but the item for the fiscal quarter of a first quarter investment report. And I'm just going to touch on it just for briefly. But from year end last year, shows a twenty-eight percent increase. Just want to let everybody know that. So our city's moving in the right direction money-wise. Also, the department heads. As an elected official, we have, we don't hire department heads. But we rely on our department heads to do the right thing for our city, okay? They deal with a lot more sophisticated stuff than what we do. So we rely on what they do. We have to, they make great reports, we listen to, and we take that in heart. For example, the fire truck, the ladder truck. We knew it was in the process of working. It got done. You know, we can't wait four years, but the process we listen, they got, the department heads got it done. So that, I want to thank departments on all the hard work that they put out. As a council member, we do rely on them quite a bit. The other items, we have people coming up here wondering, well, why can't we get a report on this? Report on this? It's still in the working. The animal shelter's still working. The homeless situation's still in the workings. When we get the reports, it'll come out. We're, it doesn't, just because we leave tonight, it doesn't mean that everything stops. Our department heads are working on it. And the whole city keeps working on it. When we get the information, we rely on them, they get the work done. Once we get the information, when it's on, then we'll present it. We work what we can. Once we receive it, we try to put it out as fast as we can. I wish we could get a lot of things done overnight. But it's government, right? But my biggest thing was, and also tonight, I'm done off that. Thank you guys for whatever, everything that you guys do. I know you guys work really hard for us. The presentations are always spot on. We appreciate that, you know, getting grilled, you know, you guys have to deal with a lot. But I appreciate it. Also, during public forum, you know, if you come up speak at the stand, just make sure it's factual. Make sure, you always make sure that it's facts, okay? I've been hit several times and it's unfactual. You need to check your facts. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, I guess I'll go last. So I'll kind of go backwards here. Why wasn't this brought before council that we renamed a park? Well, because we don't own the park. That's Merced County's park. So that was Merced County's decision to make. It was a recommendation that actually started with Councilmember Jones, so I applaud him. Noah Jones has been a fantastic member of this community and a city employee for a long time. And I couldn't think of a better person to rename that park. So, you know, were recommendations made? Yes. Was that the county's decision? Yes. So it makes no sense that it would come before this council. I'm not, I'm not a board of supervisor for Merced County. I'm a, I'm the mayor of the city of Los Manos. So that Seventh Street Ballpark belongs to Merced County, not to us. So, and again, thank you to the county, Guy Gary, everybody over there who helped make that, make that decision. Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you, I can't take credit for the naming of that. That was done by a volunteer, which was Marcy Failey. She was in, she spearheaded that, she's the one that takes credit. I just helped pass forward information, that was all.
All right. So again, congratulations to Noah, that was very, very well deserved. So I'm glad to see that that happened. Regarding the animal shelter, I know somebody in the public asked about kind of an update on the animal shelter. So I will tell you where we are in the animal shelter compared to where we were before I got on council. You have double the staff working at the animal shelter than you did before I got here. You have a veterinarian now that spays and neuters the animals in the shelter, which you didn't have before, you know, beforehand. And also too, we're open Saturdays. So you now have the opportunity on Saturdays. I know a lot of people commute and that was a big request of that. So it's not that we're ignoring the animal shelter. It's not that I'm not ignore, you know, ignoring the animal shelter. But things are happening, and again, the speed of government. Again, I wish I could, you know, and when I, when I say I want a new roof on my house, I wish one would appear tomorrow. But it doesn't work that way, especially in the speed of government. And so that's just reality. And so we are, we are moving forward. I am also hoping with the animal shelter that we would have some public forums, that maybe we would have a town hall thing like that, just to get more input from the public. So I do definitely think that that would maybe be needed. Volunteer Day, Ranchwood Park, I'm going to cheat and look on my phone here real quick. We have several volunteer days, Los Manos Parks and Rec, Joe, thank you, went to the first one, October seventh at Ranchwood, that was amazing. Painted a basketball court, revitalized that whole area, it looks awesome. I've actually had members from the community thank me and say, you know, I'm really happy to take my kids to the parks now and get out there and do that. We have another one coming up behind the community center to address the rail trail, October twenty-first. And we had a lot of young turnout, which was awesome. I thought that was great to have a lot of kids out there doing that. So I'll be out there for that one this weekend. So if anybody wants to join me, and also Vineyard, Vineyard Park, I will be out there from eleven to twelve. So with that being said, you know, we do a lot of business up here. We try to get a lot of business done. And I know that people have a lot of questions and it's okay to ask those questions. We'll do our best to answer those questions. I missed a few emails this week, I missed a few text messages. I'll be the first to admit, I'm not a robot, I'm going to make mistakes. And when I make a mistake, I'll be the first one to tell you. With that being said, it's also our job to run government efficiently. And efficiently means if we have staff up here that are being paid by the hour salary or large wages, when the discussion topic or the amount of work that goes into five hundred dollars versus a copy machine, that's not an efficient way to run things. And so, you know, I know, you know, their due diligence was due. But a lot of the questions that came from council tonight can also happen over the phone and also happen in the form of an email, especially consent agenda items. We can reach out to staff and talk to them, you know. And so these are things that I hope that we kind of run a little more efficiently. Because it's my understanding that Councilmember Lewis did not reach out to staff at all this week regarding the questions, all the questions were asked tonight. So I've had some questions and reached out. So again, just, I want to run efficiently. I, you know, we want to make it, make it worth everything. So with that being said, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
Second motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned at eight o'clock.